This is the July 22, 2021 Planning Board Public Hearing. If there are any emergencies, there are exits in the rear of this room and go down the stairs out the front door. And we're just assuming that everyone who is here unmasked has been vaccinated. If you're not, we just ask you to wear a mask. So may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Chair LaFaro.
President.
Vice Chair Affinity is absent this evening. The Secretary is here. Board Member Catalinato.
Present.
Board Member Long.
Present.
Board Member Zuccarelli.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have a slight order change tonight. We ask that if you do want to speak to a particular application, to come to the podium, give us your name and your affiliation before you start. So the first application tonight will be the Woods at Hampton Bays. And Dave, are you there? We'll read the -- Jackie, you'll read the notice, please?
Yes. Please take notice that in accordance with the Town Code of the Town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, July 22, 2021, at 6:00 PM prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York. To consider the final application entitled Woods at Hampton Bays, the application consists of a 20-lot planned residential development cluster plan with two Long Island workforce housing lots included in the overall slot -- an overall 20-lot subdivision. With the proposed roadways terminating in two cul-de-sacs and three separate open space parcels totaling 5,777 acres or 251,653 square feet of open space, the equivalent of 35% of the overall lot area. On a 16.54-acre undeveloped wooded parcel situated in the R-20 zoning district and Aquifer Protection Overlay District, Central Pineburns compatible growth area, TDR receiving area located at 125 Old Riverhead Road West in the hamlet of Hampton Bays, Suffolk County Taxentate Number 900-205-3-12.1 by order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Gloria Burke Secretary.
Jim, do we have sufficient notice?
Yes, we have sufficient notice.
Thank you.
The applicant, David Gilmartin Jr., foul for its 50 station road water mail in New York. Tonight I have with me co-counsel Michael Strauss. I believe you've met, and our surveyor Ken Beckman. I think the legal advertisement pretty much gives you all the background information. The one thing I would add is it's a reduced yield plan. We did come in with a yield plan that did have 26 lots. We reduced it to 18. And then you have the two affordable lots, which bring it up to 20. And as we all know, it's a density incentive to add the affordable lot. So it's really 18 lots that we're looking at. This board, back in 2007, adopted a negative declaration. We went through the preliminary process. The board asked for some changes to be made to the map. We made all of those changes. I think staff can confirm that. And so we're here tonight to listen to the public about the final plan, and I'll get out of the way and let that happen.
Great, thank you. Is there someone who'd like to speak to this application? Anyone wanting to speak to the Woods at Hampton Bays? Please, thank you.
Hi there, my name is Amy Paradise. I kind of goofed, I meant to be here for something else, but this is in town. It doesn't look so bad, it's going to get developed. I just ask of the developers.
Can you address your comments?
I'm sorry. There was a lot of comment from people that I know about septic grants and things like that and how that's being handled. I wondered about it a little bit myself. I assume that's all taken care of.
We'll find out.
I don't know. I think it's rather short on affordable housing for Hampton Bays. Two units, I'm sorry, will be. We're building way too much expensive stuff and not enough affordable stuff. And lastly, as people build these things, I hope that some change is made in the way property is cleared because things are being destroyed. They just go in with bulldozers, they clear the whole lot. One of the things that I and some of my friends are passionate about are little box turtles, and they get slaughtered. I don't know how you solve that. I've got a friend who has a dog who hunts turtles and brings them home, but I think it's time to think about it. Box turtles are actually getting endangered, and they're not the only things whose habitat is wiped out. That's all. I'd like it done as sensitively as possible if it's going to be done. And the low-income housing thing, we're not doing a very good job.
Okay, we have your notes, thank you. Someone else wish to speak to this? David, can you respond to the -- how the septic is going to be installed? David or Michael, either?
Good evening, Michael Strauss, 907 Main Street, Port Jefferson. Obviously, the septic systems are all per Suffolk County Health Department requirements. We are, of course, constructing the two affordable lots that are required under New York state law and by this township. And with respect to clearing, there's a lot of open space here, and of course, any developer doesn't want to clear lots completely, they want to leave trees around. And not only because that's what's preferred by most end buyers, but just from a cost point of view, no one wants to take down more trees than they need to because it's expensive. Even if they somehow wanted to, it wouldn't make any sense for them to go beyond what's reasonable and leave buffering around each home. And if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to provide answers.
You're in the Aquifer Protection Overlay District with this, so there are clearing restrictions.
Of course, which they'll abide by, and there's plenty of open space as well.
And it's an AI system that you're putting in?
No, these are going to be standard septic systems. It was all in before the code changed.
Would you consider upgrading to an AI system?
I'm sure my client does not want to do that, no.
County -- so you got in before the county requirement?
Of course, all the individuals are in, yes. Long since then.
Any other comments on this? Anything from the planning board? If not, we'll close with a 10-day written comment period.
Motion.
Motion by Robin.
Second.
Second by Gloria. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Five in favor, one absent. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. So number two on the agenda is Sherwood St. George.
Excuse me, Mr. Phil Martin, I think your client dropped his mask. I don't -- thank you.
So do we have sufficient notice, Council?
We have to give it a posting, thank you very much.
She's giving -- Jackie, can you stand up?
We have proper notice, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Jackie, do you want to read into the record, please?
Please take notice that in accordance with the Town Code of the Town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, July 22, 2021, at 6:00 PM prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York. To consider the final application entitled Sherwood St. George LLC, the final application consists of a standard subdivision plan proposing two lots on a 3.2816-acre property situated in the R-20 zoning district located south of St. George Street, also fronting on the western terminus of Namisette Road, which are both private roads, at 21 St. George Place within the hamlet of Quayagh, Suffolk County Taxentate Number 900-377-1-18.1 by order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Gloria Burke Secretary.
Thank you. Daphne?
Hello. Daphne Vaughn, Serviceto environmental planning for the applicant. So as the notice says, the subject property is 3.28 acres, 142,947 square feet. It's in an R-20 zoning district. It fronts both on St. George Place and Namisette Road, they're both private, and the property's currently vacant. At the present time, the owner wishes to subdivide the property into two oversized lots. Lot one will be 75,731 square feet, and lot two is 67,217 square feet. So the access will be through a common driveway area here off of St. George Place. The lots will both be flat lots with 20 feet of road frontage each. We're also proposing an access and utility easement within that same area. So per the directive of the pre-app report, all of the trees with a 24-inch caliper were located on the property and shown on the map. So I met with Jackie recently, and she has my sketches. We were discussing that the planning board had asked for this because of potential interest in a non-disturbance, non-fertilization buffer to preserve as many of these trees as possible. Oh, she's going to pass them. Good. So this sketch is in keeping with the meeting that Jackie and I had to discuss this, and the purpose of it is to try to preserve as many of the trees as possible, mainly on the northern and western sides of the property. So it's approximately a 10-foot buffer in the area of the common driveway and the flag for lot one, and then it tapers out to 20 feet wide, which actually matches a buffer that was required on the subdivision to the north of this. It will preserve -- you see there on the western side, there's about six or seven large pine trees that it will preserve. And, you know, we want to preserve the integrity of the area, the character, and also buffer those adjacent properties to mitigate the development. Jackie and I did notice recently with all the delays due to COVID, it is nice to be here in person, I will say, that the original Health Department on this did lapse. My office is working with them right now to reapprove that. We did change agents, surveyors, and engineers, so all of that is now -- the map is approved conceptually. It's just we're ironing out paperwork details with them, and I expect to have that map next week. So I think Jackie said we may need to adjourn this to the next meeting, so I can provide that for you.
So this is R-20 zoning, right?
Yes.
And these are oversized lots?
Correct.
That can be further subdivided?
Yeah. Technically, the property could accommodate additional lots, theoretically.
The in-process approval for the Health Department, if you -- so you're not actually looking for approval for a septic for house, or what are you?
No, we're looking for -- we're just reapproving the subdivision approval that was done a few years back. It's just that the time period has lapsed, and we just noticed this recently. So like I said, we had to change surveyors, engineers, and me. So on the paperwork, that has all been reflected to them. I was discussed with Stephen Churchill at the Health Department yesterday, who does a lot of the subdivision reviews, that he thought the map was fine, he just needed me to have an originally signed application, which I just got and will give to him tomorrow morning first thing. And he said that this should be able to go for stamping next week.
Daphne, the easement, did that is down up here on this part, the southernly part here?
Oh, down here, yes.
Yes. What type of easement is that?
I believe these easements have to do with fence lines that were there. I'm not --
The reason why I'm asking that is I'm noting that there are -- there's maple in there, there's some pines in there, there's some fencing. I don't know if that is equally conservation easement or another buffer zone?
No, I think it's an easement between the two property owners.
That's a boundary line.
All of that information is in the file. I know it was provided by the prior agent.
I think if it was a private, it would be a boundary line agreement as to if it was as to fencing, that would probably be a boundary line agreement. This looks like it's about --
It's an odd-shaped triangle.
Well, it's --
2011, it was filed.
Yeah, it says easement as filed in, and this Libra page, 317, 2011, Schedule C and D. I would be interested in knowing what type of easement is there.
The owner is here with me, do you know this information? Do you want to come up?
Robin, I believe they're boundary line agreements, easements, with encroachments, historic encroachments.
Yes, please give us your name for the record.
Mark Roth.
Mark Roth.
Yes, this was -- the fence was encroaching, and it was an easement that I granted to the neighbor.
So, okay, usually those are boundary line agreements. All right, can we just -- somebody, because you know it.
You can pull it.
Yeah, can we take a look at it?
If you have a copy that you can provide to us, that would be helpful.
Because there are some trees in that area also. Are those being considered for preservation, too? There's some maples, some pines. That's what brought my eye to that.
Not opposed to it.
Okay, can we look into that, Jackie?
Yeah, I see you. I see you.
Thank you.
And you'll provide the easement language?
We will get hold.
The attorney, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
I believe that there is a copy in the file already. I do have the old agent's file, and I saw something today about the submission of all of the legal documents that were for the property. I can resubmit that.
Yeah. Okay, if we need it.
I just would like to see if we should be protecting those trees that are in that area, in that easement area, whether it's a boundary line agreement or whatever it is. There seem to be substantial, and I'll leave that to the horticulturists, but there seem to be 24-inch maples, 30-inch, that seems to be substantial.
Is there anyone who wants to speak to this application? No more questions from the board? We'll close with a 10-day written comment period. Motion by --
Motion.
But wait, it's being adjourned.
She would like to adjourn it to August 12, just so she can supply the health department.
Ah, okay, so no closing, sorry. So we're adjourning this?
Okay. Thank you.
To August 12?
Yes, August 12. Thank you.
No reposting necessary?
Yep, it was open and coming.
Okay, we're moving on to item number three, which is Paris Project Management Is someone here representing Paris?
Did I forget to adjourn it?
Oh, did you make motions to adjourn?
No. Sorry. Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Robin, second by Gloria, and all in favor. Opposed, abstentions?
Thank you, Patty.
Five in favor, one absent. Thank you, Patty. Paris Project Management, do we have notice?
I just need the original notice documents.
Oh, I dropped them all off this morning.
Perfect, I have copies, which is sufficient. We're ready, Madam Chair.
Okay, great. Do you want to read into the record, Jackie?
Sure. Please take notice that in accordance with the Town Code of the Town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board Thursday, July 22, 2021, at 6:00 PM prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York. To consider the lot line modification application entitled Paris Project Management LLC and Reed, the application consists of a lot line modification which proposes to transfer 1,745 square feet from parcel one to parcel two on a 55,095-square-foot total project area situated in the R-15 zoning district, the water quality high priority area, and the New York State archaeologically sensitive area situated at 1,005 and 1,017, New York Road, Suffolk County Taxentate Number 900-43-2-39 and 40 by order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Gloria Burke Secretary.
Thank you. Please, you're Nancy Marshall?
Good evening, yes, Nancy Marshall, Land Planning Services, Panago Road, East Hampton. This is -- we provided you with this kind of strange history of this. Decades ago, the monuments were placed, the border was all messed up, the surveyors missed it a bunch of times. One of the parties went to the Health Department, they realized it didn't match the 1981 Suffolk County tax map numbers, they thought they could correct it with a boundary line agreement, which was deemed an illegal subdivision, as we know. So we're here today to legalize the correct property after all that, after decades of confusion.
So it's that triangle wedge?
Right, that's what's being shifted over from lot one. Our client is actually losing property, but it's what it's --
So it's going from one to two?
Exactly, right.
Yeah, that's pretty straightforward. Yeah. Anyone from the public wish to speak to this? Any questions on the board?
Is there a plan to rebuild? I think there are at least one house on the property.
Well, I know that it initially started, but they needed a new septic, and that's when this was kind of red flagged. As far as what the long-term, you know, projects are for both properties involved, I'm not really sure. I'm sure there's going to be some kind of building permit.
I thought I saw a sign about a modular home.
Oh, really? Oh, I'm not even aware of that, yeah.
I pass by there all the time.
Oh, do you? Yeah, maybe. Yeah, I don't know, sorry.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So we have a motion to close with a 10-day written comment period by Robin, second by Gloria, and all in favor. Opposed, abstentions? Five in favor, one absent. And number four and last on the agenda is 2331 Montauk LLC.
We have proper notice, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. Jackie, do you want to read it into the record?
Yes.
Please take notice that in accordance with the Town Code of the Town of Southampton, a public hearing will be held by the Southampton Town Planning Board on Thursday, July 22, 2021, at 6:00 PM prevailing time at the Southampton Town Hall at 116 Hampton Road, Southampton, New York. To consider the site plan application entitled 2331 Montauk Highway -- Montauk, sorry, LLC, the application proposes the construction of an approximately 5,600-square-foot two-story commercial building with an accessory apartment on a 23,497-square-foot parcel situated in the HO zoning district and located at 2,331 Montauk Highway within the hamlet of Bridge Hampton, Suffolk County Taxentate Number 900-86-1-6 by order of the Planning Board of the Town of Southampton, Gloria Burke Secretary.
Welcome, John.
Hello, good evening for the board. My name is John Bennett, Bennett and Reed, 212, Millane in Southampton, and Steve Narota from Areas Design is with me. Before we start, we did bring some small sets of the Areas Design package that I think Steve just submitted. If you need them, it might be helpful.
Yeah.
Wait until -- I can distribute. Yeah. Sit down, Jackie. I'll just put them here, because every time I try to hand them out, it's --
They fall. That's a simple task.
That's what I say?
That's a simple task.
I know. Sometimes the simple tasks are the ones that are hard to do. Kathleen?
Thank you.
So this is a site plan special exception application, and again, I always -- pardon me, but I always remind everyone that a special exception application is -- people think it sounds like a variance, but it's not. It's a use that is permitted upon special exception in a site plan for construction of a new office building, 5,600 square feet in size with one 600-square-foot accessory apartment located on the second floor of the proposed building. Property's a little over half an acre in size, 23,497 to be exact. The proposed building will be located in the northern portion of the property. We're proposing to eliminate the existing driveway on the property which serviced a residence that has since been demolished. So we'll use a shared access driveway with the building to the immediate west, which is the Farrow Building, Building, Building. So fewer curb cuts on Montauk Highway and the hamlet of Bridge Hampton, I think, is a good idea, everyone would agree. So this has given us the opportunity to do so. Also, proposed parking is located in the rear of the building and will be shared with the existing office building to the west, and the parking will all be compliant. We did receive Suffolk County Department of Health Services Board of Review for the approval. If anyone wants -- the copies are in the record, if anyone wants additional copies, I have them, but I won't hand them out because probably enough paper in the record, but if you have them, if you need them, I'll hand them to you. So I do have extra copies. Variances were also granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals, including side yard relief and relief to permit the establishment of one accessory apartment within the building. Got caught in that unfortunate thing where the zoning board, rather, the Health Department regulations only permit the one apartment, and even with that, we had to go to the County Health Department Board of Review. We did receive some feedback from the board regarding proposed architecture during the pre-application stage, and we also sought informal review in the ARB. As you know, they have an advisory, but not actual permitting power on these matters. The architecture is within your remit. We did make some requested changes, including modifying the second-floor windows over the front entrance, porch roof, and front entrance doors to try to make it a little bit distinguishable from the property or building to the west. That was the concern. Again, Steve Narota is here. If the board has any additional questions, I'm here as well as the board has any additional questions. I like to keep these brief because after -- I just give like a sort of a small presentation because the reason we're having this hearing is essentially for the public comment, so I don't have anything else to say.
Did you want to say anything, or are you okay?
I don't really have anything to add to that.
Okay.
Well, actually, one thing I would add. My name is Steve Narota with Aris Design. Thank you. One thing I would add is just from a landscape perspective, there's an existing large evergreen screen that's on the west property right now. We plan to continue that to the east, so we'll create a nice buffer along the property line and also on any of the 50-foot transitions at that.
Good, thank you. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to this application?
Yes, I would.
Please, come up to the podium, give us your name.
Yes.
It's very simple. My name is David Wenger. I'm the owner of the post office in Bridge Hampton, and I just don't know where this sits with regard to that property. I haven't had the opportunity to look at that.
It's east of it.
It's on the same side, just east?
No, it's on the opposite side of the street.
Opposite side.
Yeah.
Okay, so there's no interference?
Can you address your comments to us, please?
I'm sorry. So there's no interference with regards to that property, that was my concern.
No.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
What was your name, sir?
David Wenger, W E N G E R.
Anyone else wishing to speak to this? Board, any questions? We've seen this application.
We've seen it enough times.
Any number of times. Okay, so we will then entertain a motion to close with a written comment period for 10 days.
Motion.
Motion by Zuccarelli, second by Craig, all in favor. Opposed, abstentions? Five in favor, one absent. Thank you. You want these back?
Let's hold them for the next time.
Yeah. No, no, no. Jackie, let's hold some of these.
Yeah.
I can take them and have them.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you. They're very enough.
Hate to kill these trees.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Robin, second by Gloria, and all in favor. Opposed, abstentions? Six in favor, one absent.
It out, it out, it out, it out. Sometimes it doesn't quite go like that.
And maybe they --
I'm almost tempted to go there and get the other people to keep you on your toes.
Exactly.
John's claim is, yeah.
Against it.
Oh.
Oh, Benny?
Yeah. We've had -- You've got Patty. Patty?